All right, um, six o'clock, let's go ahead and. Call the meeting to order, I see Director Johnston is just in the waiting room, so I think we can. She'll be logging in shortly. All right, um, just want to make sure we have all of our, um. Board directors here, um, I do see Director Jeffries there, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, Director Johnston. Oh, you're muted, but just want to make sure, I see you there.
Thank you.
All right, perfect, Director Stoffer?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, and, uh, and, um, we call it Director Elect, uh, Director, soon to be Director, about to be sworn in Director Hal- Halverson, are you there?
I'm here.
Yeah, great, welcome. Um, so, we will go ahead and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and regarding virtual meeting guidelines, obviously we're virtual, so from a safety perspective, um, not much to cover there, but. Um, just want to, any, any participants that are in, please, uh, mute, mute, make sure your microphone remains muted. And the meeting is being recorded, however, the executive session will be excluded from that recording. Onto our vision and mission statements. Um, vision, our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. And mission in connection with our community, the Squim School District and Power Staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe. And respectful environment, so each student thrives. And Director Stoffer, would you like to read our, our acknowledgement?
Yes, thank you, the Squim School District Administrative and School Building sit on the estate. Land of the Skollum people was quality, traditionally come from one nation, history has led to the formation of three sovereigns quality. Tribal governments, the lower Elwa Palm Tribe, which is located in Port Angeles. The Jamestown Squirrel Tribe, which is located here in Squim and in the Port Gambos Golem Tribe, which is located in Kingston, Washington. The district's primary partnership is with the Jamestown's quality tribe. Today, the tribe and district share a partnership that includes official consultation. On program and funding changes that may directly affect American Indian and Alaskan native students. As well as a holistic service planning for students to remain successful in their educational journeys.
Thank you. And with that, that brings us to our two point zero one, our oath of office, and I do believe. Do we have, um, we do, I do see an attendance, we have, um. We have Judge Barnett, welcome.
Hi, thank you.
And I am going to, uh, pass it over to you, we have, uh, soon to be Director Halverson here, here in the audience for the, uh, or here in the, uh, on the panel for the swearing in.
Okay, thank you, and Ms. Halverson, are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay, great, thanks, I will read the entire oath, and then I'll ask that you please respond at the end with, I do. And so if you'd please raise your right hand. Do you, Marin Halverson solemnly swear or affirm that you are a citizen of the United States and the state of Washington? That you are legally qualified to assume the position of Squim School District School Board Member. That you will support the constitution and laws of the United States and the state of Washington. And that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of this office to the best of your ability.
I do.
Okay, well, congratulations, Director Halverson. Uh, thank you for your service to the community and best wishes to you and to the entire Squim School Board. And thank you for allowing me to be part of this, I really do appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a great night.
You too. Okay, welcome Director Halverson.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um, with that, that does bring us to, uh, three point zero one, which is the, um, executive session, and. We're going to meet for, uh, approximately sixty minutes to, uh, to consider employment of personnel, I will say that, that, there is a chance where that could be extended. Um, and I think, um, just important, uh, to note that, um, when we first started this process, one of the, um, one of the considerations and agreements was that we. Had decided to do the, um, search as a, as a confidential superintendent search for, for several various reasons, so obviously we, that's. One of the reasons we'll, we'll certainly be discussing the candidates, um, that have applied in executive session, but also to note that. There is a, there is a process where we will come back from executive session to make a decision on the candidates. Moving forward, um, it's, it's just worth. Noteworthy that when that decision is made, we will still be referring, we will not be referring to any candidates by name when we make that decision, so. Um, so just wanted to, to point that out to, um, anybody else who, who might be here that. Um, if you're waiting, waiting until exec session is done, we, we will make that decision in public, but there won't be any, any names attached when that decision is made. Um, Director Jeffries, you have a question before we, uh, move to executive session?
Yeah, I had a question from the member of the public, um, earlier today about. Is sixty minutes mean we won't come back before one hour? Cause they wanted to hear what the, the decision was, and they wanted to know what time that was gonna be.
Yeah, that's, it, it will be no sooner than sixty minutes, we can't anticipate, um. We would, we would need to put a notice on there if we were going to extend past sixty minutes. But, um, they, um, somebody who wants to come back to hear that decision would, um. They don't have to be here, they don't have to worry about missing the decision if they take a, if they wait, um, if they come back, uh, after. Or, or within the sixty minute timeframe that, if that makes sense, so we will not come back in forty-five minutes to make the decision essentially. It will be at least sixty minutes, it could possibly be extended. But again, they will, they will hear us refer to candidates as. By, by letter. Um, essentially, so it might be, we, we are voting for candidate A and candidate C, those are hypotheticals, but, um. There's no, um, there's no names that will be mentioned in that decision. As this is a, uh, still a very much a confidential superintendent search with a, uh, certainly with, with stakeholder, uh, panels involved as well. From community and other, other members, so, okay. So with that, we will go ahead and, um. Uh, move into, uh, executive session. And I believe we're gonna do that via breakout room, is that correct, Tracy?
That is correct, I'm doing that now and setting my timer for sixty minutes, so if. Whoever is ready to extend or need to, please just text me.
Okay, thank you. We are, we are back from executive session, I think I see everybody, um, back on my screen, so we have successfully navigated away from breakout room. And we are ready to move on to our board business, uh, approved candidates to move forward in the, um. Confidential superintendent search, these candidates will be moving forward as a, uh, semifinalist, and again, as I said, um, when we started this before an exec session. Just to protect the, uh, confidentiality of the candidates, they won't be referred to, um, by name at this point in the, uh, the search, so. Um, with that, I am happy to, um, to take a motion. Director Stoffer.
Yes, thank you, uh, I make a motion that we move to, uh, the semi-finalist round, uh. Candidate B.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second?
All right. It's been moved and seconded to, uh, have candidate B, B as in boy, uh, move on to the, um. Semi-finalist, um, any discussion? All right, um. We do have, um, is everybody logged into board docs, we can go ahead and proceed with the vote via board docs, or are we not ready to do that way? I see a shaking head the other way, so we're gonna, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do a, a verbal voice, a verbal vote, um. All those in favor of, uh, proceeding with candidate B into the semifinalist interview, please signify by saying hi.
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 I for myself as well, um. Marin, I, did you say, did you say?
I did say I, yes.
I didn't, I didn't hear it on my end, so, all right, um.
Chair, may I offer some? Since we're having, since we're not into bar docs, that maybe perhaps we do a roll call vote would be appropriate, cause then. Cause with, uh, the sound waves and stuff that, uh. But that's just a suggestion.
I think was, we can, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it goes, I think it'll be our. Um. Any opposed? No, no extensions, so, uh, approve them for candidate B, so, any additional motions? Uh, Director Jeffries.
I move, we move candidate C to the semifinalist interviews.
And do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, any discussion? And Director Johnston, I see your hand up, I'm not sure if that's for a motion or is for, okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move candidate C. C as in Charlie. Onto the semifinalist round, all those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
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 I, okay, that motion passes. Um. Any other motions? Director Stoffer. Director Stoffer, you're, you're muted, sir.
Sorry about that, I move, uh, to the semifinalist round, candidate Delta.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, we do candidate Delta onto the semifinals round, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
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 Okay, I for me as well, so motion passes. Any, um, additional motions? Go ahead, uh, Director Johnson, are you, did I hear you about saying, go ahead?
Yes, uh, I'll move to, um. Uh, move candidate F, candidate F onto the semifinal round.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to move candidate F onto the finalist round, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
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 I for me as well, so that motion passes unanimously. And, uh, Director Halverson.
I was just gonna move to the next candidate, must be even more discussion.
Nope, you're set.
Okay, I'd like to move to semifinalist status, uh, candidate G.
Okay, and do you have a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moving it seconded to move, uh, candidate G to the finalist round, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying hi.
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 And I for me as well, so that passes unanimously. Any additional motions? Okay. With that, um, I, um. Hank, I'd like to, I'd like to thank you for, for your assistance, uh, thus far in the process, and, um, and I think that, um. This is gonna move us to the, to the next step in the process, um, for the search, and, um, Director. Jeffries, did you have, uh, did you have a question, um, while we have Hank here, did you have a question, I believe, about the, the next step, just so we can, uh, clarify you?
I just wanted to hear from Hank, um, well, what, what our next steps are. And, uh, so the public can also hear about, um, how we're going to, the process for moving forward, let's put it that way.
Great, yeah, okay, super, I'm happy to, happy to outline that. Uh, so, great work, board, um, and this is an exciting, exciting moment in your search. So the next step is actually my job tonight to notify, uh, those candidates that you just moved forward, that they will be, um, coming for a virtual interview. That virtual interview is on February twenty-fifth, so ten days from now is the virtual interview. Um, just with the board, so each candidate will spend some amount of time with the board. Somewhere around an hour-ish, I'll have to build the schedule, um, specific to what you just said forward. At the end of the day on the twenty-fifth, um, you will board engage in an open session that sort of feels similar to what you engaged in tonight in public session. You'll determine which of those candidates you want to invite back for a second round, so at the end of this. February twenty-fifth, we'll call that the semifinalist round, at the end of the day on the twenty-fifth, you will select your finalists. Um. After that, uh, you, you, I think you know, board, that we've been engaged, including some really hard work from your staff. To put together a panel of confidential community stakeholders. The work of the confidential stakeholders, um, and those folks have already been identified, uh, largely through a lottery, um, system. The community stakeholders will interview the finalists, so not the entire slate of semifinalists that you just selected, but. Following February twenty-fifth, when you, when you decide who makes the finalist round. Those finalists will interview with the community stakeholders in a confidential virtual set of interviews to be held on March tenth. Board members, you're not present for that, uh, that's just the community stakeholders. I'll be facilitating that event, and I'll be collecting, um, some, I think some really rich feedback from the community stakeholders during that, uh. During that series of interviews on March tenth. It is, it is the job of the community stakeholders on March tenth to provide you, board, with feedback specific to each finalist. It is not the job of the stakeholders to tell you which one is their favorite or to recommend a top candidate, that's not their job. Their job is to interview, get a sense of each candidate. Share their thoughts with you on each candidate, and you will make good use of that feedback, because two days later on March twelfth, that is your finalist interview with the finalists. That is our process, and then I want to talk a little bit about what interviews look like at, at both of your stages, so did that, did that answer your question, Director Jeffries?
You're, you're muted, Director Jeffries.
Yeah, that gave a pretty good outline, uh, go ahead and, um. Finish what, what the process might be, I suppose, if there's any questions, we might have some more.
Yeah, great, and, and.
Director Johnson has a question too, go ahead.
I'm just wondering, are those, um, meetings on the tenth and the twelfth, are those virtual or in person?
Uh, great, so the tenth for sure is virtual. And the twenty-fifth, the board needs to make a decision about whether they want that to be in person. Um, you can decide that tonight, or you can decide that on the fifteenth, um. But at one of those meetings, you should decide whether you want to do that in person or whether you want to do that virtually. So while you're thinking about that, do you want to think about that for a minute?
Well, I'm not, I, I'm still a little confused, so on the twenty-fifth, it's gonna be virtual, right? With the five candidates that we've moved forward.
Correct.
And on the tenth is the meeting with the stakeholders.
Also virtual.
That is virtual, so then the question is on the twelfth.
Yes, I might have misstated the dates just now, so.
So on the twelfth, we, we have to decide whether we want that to be in person or virtual.
Correct.
Okay.
When, when do you need that decision by, um, is there, is there, uh, when would you like it by?
So we would need that by the end of the day on February twenty-fifth, right? Because the end of the day on the twenty-fifth, I'm going to be notifying your finalists that they're finalists, and if they need to travel. It would make sense that they, they buy their plane ticket if they're traveling from somewhere else as soon as possible, right, to save, to save money. So I would say if you want to do that at a board meeting between now and then, I don't know if you have a board meeting between now and then, you could decide that. Or we could decide that in, you decide that in open session on the twenty-fifth, either one of those works.
Okay. Director Stoffer?
Yes, well, we, we do have a meeting on the twenty-second, and that could be on the, an agenda item, I suppose. Um, and then the other question, Frank, or excuse me, Hank. So on the twenty-fifth, it's, it's gonna be virtual, and it's open to the public, but do we then go into?
No, no.
Not open to the public.
Okay, I just, I wanted to hear from, from Hank, cause I, that's where I was missing.
Yeah.
Missing everything, that's why I'm asking to Hank, thanks everybody for joining in, but, to Hank.
Yeah.
Um, so that's not open to the public on the twenty-fifth. And so it's virtual, virtually a, another executive session, we'll have a special meeting, and then we'll go into. An executive session and then come back out similar to what we did here tonight.
Right.
Okay, that's what I, I wanted clarification on, and then, uh, the twenty-second, we do have a board meeting, so. Thank you.
Director Jeffries?
Yeah, well, two things, if at all possible, the finalist interviews, I would like them. In person, but I think we need to maybe make the final decision on that by the twenty-second. I think there are a lot of factors that go into having a, um. In-person meeting, including travel, but also, um, you know, where we are with, um, our COVID restrictions and so on. At what point? Do the names become? Um, open to the public, so they know. We move out of the confidentiality phase and we move into the public and naming of these are.
Yeah, so the, the, the naming only happens when you've selected your superintendent. Yeah. So the, the, the naming only happens when you've selected your superintendent.
Got you. Okay.
All right. Um, Director Stauffer.
And, and the, Tracy, could you put that calendar back up there again, please? Just wanna. Okay, and so the twelfth is a, that's a Saturday, correct? March twelfth and then March thirteenth is a Sunday, right?
Yes.
Correct. And this is the, the calendar you guys approved at the January eighteenth meeting.
Okay. And when's our next board meeting? Is that the fourteenth or the twenty-first of March?
Twenty-second as the twenty-first is a holiday.
Oh, yes, that's right. Okay. All right. Thank you again.
Um, Hank, question, as I'm looking at this, um, the March thirteenth date that's on here?
Mm-hmm.
That is, is that, is that what represents? Can you, can you, is that what represents the, the, the discussion similar to what we just had here? Or where we're?
Yeah, so we have that, so we have that date kind of held in abeyance. Um, in the event that, so March twelfth, I mean, we don't know how many people you're interviewing. It could be a very long day. I don't want to ever push a board to make a decision at the end of a long day. And so we're holding that time. I think the board, I think the board was okay with that time, but certainly if you want to switch it, I can certainly switch it. I mean, I am comfortable if you decide it's the wrong time, but, that's, that's in case we get to the end of the day and everybody's exhausted and there's too much stuff to think about and we need to come back with fresh eyes the next day, and have that conversation.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, since that was the only date we hadn't specifically talked about, I don't think.
Yeah.
Or in this, in this, um, tonight anyway. So.
Right, right.
Um, Hank, I, I'll, any, any other, any other thoughts that you want to share?
Uh, two last things if I can. One is, um, in terms of the twenty-fifth, which is the next time that I'll be with you, February twenty-fifth is, which is a, uh, what day of the week is that? That's a Friday. Can we start at eight AM board? Is there anybody that would not be able to start at eight o'clock? Okay.
Let me, um, hold on, I think. Nope, that's, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, I, I don't see Maran, but, um, cause she's not on my, you're good.
I'm fine with that too.
Thank you, Mar. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to just sort of chat with you about briefly is interview format and interview questions. So, your first, your semifinalist interviews, which are on February twenty-fifth, you will interview the, the five candidates that you just moved forward. We will use a scripted interview. So we will ask every, candidate the same questions. I will push you to be fidelity to the word so that every candidate hears the exact same question. Um, you've all been enough interviews to know why that's a really important thing to do. It's particularly in a first round interview. Toward that end, and I, so I will build the interview questions based on the ideal profile that you've created. That said, board members, you might have either a topic that you really want to see covered, or, you know, a question maybe that you really would hope that we could include. And you might not, which is totally fine. So board members, if there's something in particular you want me to attend to, whether it's a topic or a specific question, if you would email me that question by Friday of this week, um, please do so. Um, and there's no, no obligation that you do that, but there might be one or two of you that would like to take me up on that. So, I'll begin building that interview, the set of interview questions after Friday, after this coming Friday, if that makes sense. So that's your one piece regarding the first round interview. And just looking farther out, by the time you get to your, um, second round interviews, your finalist interviews, well, by that point, the candidates have had a scripted interview with you, on the twenty-fifth, they've had a scripted interview with the community stakeholders. So I get a little bit more liberal when we get to the, um, small L liberal, when we get to the finalist interviews, which is, you know, a little bit more room for follow-up questions and for questions that might be more specific to an individual, candidate. So I just wanted you to know that ahead of time. So that's, that's it. That's all I wanted to share with you.
All right. Appreciate it. And looking forward to, uh, continuing on the process. So.
So much, board.
Yeah. All right, um, and so that is the, uh, the conclusion of our, uh, agenda this evening. So with that, uh, again, wanna, wanna welcome in our, our newest board member. Um, so, and I think we, that, that about does it. So we will adjourn. Have a good night.